This conference will now be recorded.
Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion. But there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public who address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. So we have four topics on our agenda today. Strategic plan review, American Rescue Act monies, boundary redistricting, and the comp plan update. Just advanced, so everybody knows I'm going to have to jump off for another meeting. And Vice Chair Thompson will be taking over to run the meeting at 11:00. Let's go ahead and get started with our strategic plan review. And I'll turn it over to County Manager Boom.
Thank you, Chair Quayle, members of the board. Happy Wednesday morning. I just wanted to start this conversation with a little overview. You know, to your board's credit, we started a process in early 2020 to develop a strategic plan that would integrate county's budget process with the strategic planning process, and then ultimately performance benchmarks also. And so we are, we're, we're in the first year of the implementation of that first plan that was adopted in January of this year. And so the implementation phase is from basically July 1st through, through June 30th. And so all of those 14 Tier One and Tier Two tasks that your board identified are going through a process of implementation. And so, but we want to really talk about, okay, what happens after the first year? Because many of those projects will be completed and we'll need a new project list of priorities that then inform the 22, 23 budget process. And so, so we want to go back, give a little overview of where we were, where we are. And Terry Moore is joining us, a little continuity from, from last year's process. So Terry's going to present a few slides as he reviews last year. And then I will go ahead and talk about how we'll move forward. Thanks, Terry.
Okay, well, commissioners, nice to see some of you again and happy to see a couple of new ones there also. I've worked with the county a ways back. I want to start just really broadly. And I was thinking about this as I was getting ready, I will make it brief, but I was trying to imagine a rural city about 100 years ago and saying, well, you know, what were they doing? They're doing a few services and everything was unchanged for years at a time. And the people were unchanged for years at a time. Their main, main task was to keep a few pieces of equipment running and maybe do a couple of services. They were operational. There wasn't a need for a strategy because the strategy was let's just keep the equipment running. And that's what they did year by year. So now fast forward to where we are now, 100 years later. And I'm in a rural town, Mosher, Oregon, 450 people. In the last few years, we have had to deal with a train wreck, COVID, dysfunctional wells, urban growth boundary amendments, bike paths, electric vehicle charging stations, a charter school that was becoming, that was in trouble, a new city hall, a new fire station. And the list goes on and on. This is a city of 450 people. And now, and what for, if you're that size and you have all these multiple services that you have to deliver. Now move on to your situation where you're, you've got 100 times the population that we have and 1,000 times the area, and you're trying to provide services. And technology is changing. The population is mobile. Their demands are changing because of, for any number of reasons. And as all that happens, there's just way too much to do and limits on time and money. So the question becomes for all local governments, no matter what their size, and for a, a multi-disciplinary, multi-service government like yours, especially what's important? And really ultimately, usually the most important thing is to keep the services that you are now delivering operational. So there's a lot of emphasis on operation, and that's as it should be. But there is also a requirement to be looking ahead and to be thinking about what it is that you're going to have to do to keep those services operational, to keep the quality of service up to speed, and to deal with the changes that you know are coming and to deal with the changes that you don't know are coming. So that's what your strategic plan is doing. And it's, it's a roadmap for the future. It has, as, you know, it has, it usually starts at the top with a broad vision. The vision becomes more specific with a mission. The mission becomes more specific with some objectives. And the objectives then become more specific as you talk about actions or projects that you're going to take to achieve the objectives that meet the mission that get you to the vision. So that is a process that I think everyone is familiar with. That's the plan that you have. And if we go to the next slide, then the reasons that you have one, you know, you want to get your priorities matching your resources. You've got to deal with the changes. And then there's the one point that I haven't made is the importance of transparency and accountability. How do the people that you are serving know what you're doing and are, and have confidence? Or, and, and that that confidence then becomes a trust that their public officials are working in, in their best interest wisely and with the appropriate resources. So you have a strategic plan. Next slide shows the way that's laid out. This is a typical organization. The, the foundation for action is the vision, mission, and values. Show those in a minute. Then there was, last year, we did a situation assessment. And right in the middle of our situation assessment, the situation assessment changed because, I said last year, but it was actually the year before when COVID kicked in. And nonetheless, we, we incorporated all that. And then came to, a little over, about a year ago this time, we're working through what were we going to do by way of focus areas? And then what actions were going to happen in those focus areas? Next. So this is just things that you've seen many times now. On the mission, as you'll see, the both, both elements of the vision are, relate to the services. Making sure that you're clear about what services you're delivering to the community and that that's a committee, the committee, and the community wants to support them. And secondly, that you're doing it efficiently, effectively, within budget, et cetera. And then a vision of what you would like the county to be like. And, and so I'll just let you scan that and won't try to repeat it. And finally, over on the left-hand side, the guiding values. As you are conducting your business and trying to meet your vision, what are the standards that you will use to do your business? Engagement, collaboration, effectiveness and efficiency, equity, fairness, and transparency and accountability? And many, on that point, I just want to say that, as I said to you before, those kinds of things look very similar across plans. But they are, there are differences that look subtle, but turn out to be important. The fact that you have those particular guiding principles, to me, means that when citizens come to you, they, they have an entry point to say, I'm here to talk to you about this particular policy that you've got. And the reason I feel the way I do is because I think it is in, under principle of equity, I think it is unfair to this group or whatever it is. So it's an entry point for the public as well to say, if those are your values, then I want to talk to you about those values as I come to talk to you about what's going on. So there are many different focus areas that we could have gone to. I won't take you back through that. The commissioners that were there know at the time how we, usually the way this works is you have a bunch of things out there. And then you, they're all scattered around, and then you try to get them into buckets. And these are the buckets that we ended up with. And your plan is structured around those five buckets. And an important point that I'll make now is that you have a plan and you're on the first year of that plan. The first year is really the hard, the getting it, the plan done, getting the, the habit of going and getting some implementation going is the hard part. Once you get that going for a year or two, then things get easier. And we're now at the point where we're doing an update. The plan itself is supposed to last three to five years. But the update is happening annually. When we are doing the update, the staff assumption and the plan assumption is that we are updating projects and actions within focus areas and not changing focus areas. A change in focus areas would typically happen at the three to five-year major revision of the plan. Having said that, so that's the assumption that I think staff is working with. Having said that, things happen. And if a commissioner believes that we've got a wrong focus area, there needs to be a new focus area, then that should be talked about. But right now, I think my assumption, I won't speak for everybody else, is that we are updating within the existing focus areas. So now then the, here's the strategic planning process. And Amanda did a good job of putting this together on what, what is a relatively, it, it looks harder than it is. So I'm just going to say in, in, in my words, because I think the county now has this pretty well figured out, that we did a plan that was done mainly on a calendar, at the end of, at the end of a calendar year, finished in December and then adopted in January. So you'd think of a plan as a one-year plan on a calendar year basis. But your budget runs on a fiscal basis, which is July to June. So you've got this, you know, essentially it seems out of sync, but it's not really. Because you really want your strategic plan done so that you can have a work plan in January, February, that can go to staff and council and, and the board as they are making adjustments to the budget so that the budget reflects the strategic plan. In particular, the budget has money to implement elements of the strategic plan. That is what the county now has set up. So we're doing the plan update now so that by December, the staff can kind of put a final version together so that you, the board, can amend and adopt by January or February. But you're adopting a plan that really doesn't start getting implemented until the new budget comes out. But at the same time, but it doesn't mean that you've stopped planning because you're still operating on the implementation that Don talked about with the budget that you passed a few months ago, you know, in, in June. So it's that, that cycle. And this is the diagram that's trying to show that in fact, it's working the way it's supposed to. So you can take a look at that and see on a, on a fiscal year basis, which is the way the, the cycle is set up, is that implementation is happening all the time. And then in, and then review and update happens in the fall. And that's looking at everything that's gone on in this calendar year. You know, all the implementation that you've done of that plan. And then in the, in the spring, you're making sure that the strategic plan and the budget fit together. And, and then doing, and then when you're doing a big revision of the plan, which we're not doing this year, then there's a bigger element of community outreach that happens in the summer as you prepare for redoing the plan in the fall so that you're back on cycle again. So that's kind of the long over, a little, I went a little longer than I thought, but that's the overview of where we are on the plan and why we are now at the point of looking at what progress has been made and what items should be focused on in the next fiscal year. Thanks.
Thank you, Terry. So I'm going to talk a little bit about current progress. I, I, I will say Terry's helping us providing technical assistance as we go through year two. And he'll be doing some of the facilitation as we move forward, but he's been a great asset. And Amanda's walking through us because the goal is to have Amanda play kind of the champion role as we go through all the iterations of future strategic plans. So thanks to Terry and Amanda for their work. But as you know, you know, staff has been tracking basically all the Tier One and the Tier Two and even the Tier Three projects. And so I sent out a project overview on Monday to the board. But you'll be seeing it in another iteration as we survey the board on some hot topics that they would like to maybe put on the table for this next year's update. And we'll also post it on the website so that the public can see where we are. I won't go into all the details because time is kind of tight this morning. But what we are figuring is that we will substantially complete 80% of those priority areas by the end of June. There will be obviously a few that, that are not completed or a few that may need to be reprogrammed. But we will make significant progress with, with roughly 80% of them. And I will say that, you know, when I say 80%, you know, that's great, but it's 80% during a pandemic. And so I want to asterisk that a little bit because this has been a year or two, like any two years I've ever worked in, in the public sector. So I know that I've said that before, but I think it's just, it's just worth reminding ourselves that, you know, the burden of COVID is large enough. The fact that we've been able to do all this other work. I mean, I just think it's, it's amazing and I give staff and, and your board all the credit. But here's a list of the Tier One and the Tier Two projects. When we send out the survey tool to your board Friday as part of, of the Friday update, it actually has a summary by, by each of the focus areas on all the Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three projects so that you see what the current status is. And then it also asks, you know, what other priorities do you have moving forward? There are a few that we already know about, that at least I know about. And one could be 911 consolidation. I think that needs to be on our priority list as we move forward because it's going to take time and energy. But I, I know each of you has a number of others. And then, you know, we're, we're, we're working, some of the work that's on the Tier One and Tier Two is just a continuing effort, like affordable housing, like environmental quality. So, so we're going to go through the Tier One and the Tier Two and the Tier Three and basically say, okay, where are we with these? Which ones aren't done? And of those that, that are not done, do we want to reshuffle what the priorities are? Do some of those Tier Three become Tier One? Or do we have a whole new set of Tier One priorities? And so that's the process we're going to go through with the board. And I think the survey of the board will, will be the seed that will get that discussion started. But we do assume that we'll be coming to, to, to your board in a future work session slash retreat also. So what's next? Today's the strategic plan review, just to go over the process. We'll be sending out a board survey. And honestly, we'll probably send it out even broader than just the board. Because I'm sure the sheriff and other departments would like to also weigh, weigh in as well as the public. And then we'll, we'll plan a first strategic planning retreat where we'll discuss the survey results and have that initial conversation about future priorities. And then if we need to have follow-ups, we certainly will in November. But then we'll draft the, the revised plan and present it to your board in December with final adoption in January. And again, that timeline is important because the budget process will be earnestly happening after we turn the calendar to the new year. So, so, so that is where we are right now. I'm excited about year two. I'm excited about the progress that we've made in year one. As we've talked before, our goal is to institutionalize this so that it's part of all of our legacy for this organization. And so I just wanted to get any feedback from your board, whether this process still resonates, makes sense, and how you might want us to proceed. So thank you.
Thank you, Don, and thank you, Terry. I would agree that we've made a tremendous amount of progress in a year where we've had to contend with public health issues and concerns throughout this, you know, year and two, you know, almost past two years. So I, I do think it's quite an accomplishment. Commissioner Thompson had her hand up. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can hardly wait. Thank you. You know, Terry just did such an amazing job for us. And here we are, moving with clarity, focus, ease, and grace, right? This is fabulous. We've been moving mountains. I mean, the chair said that, the county manager said that, yeah, we've been moving mountains. So I was on a drive around in my neighborhood with Ted McLean. And he said, you know, drainage is a big issue in the quality of the roads in your neighborhood. And I thought, oh, I would never know that. I mean, I might kind of know it, but I wouldn't really know it. So I wonder if part of this strategic planning process is asking staff, do they have things that we might not know about, about their work that we should consider as we're going forward? And do we have a, a way to include staff's considered input in our process?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that's a really good point, and we will reach out to staff as, as part of, of this.
I agree with Commissioner Thompson. I think those that are involved in the day-to-day operations certainly know what our needs are throughout the county much better than we do, more than likely. Even though we are doing the goal-setting and vision, it is helpful to have that input. Commissioner Banks.
I fully concur with, with that. And, you know, because you brought Ted's name up, it brought something to mind in the moment. And I would really like county, as part of the environmental section, to really look at our fish pipes and our culverts and make sure that they're functional. I would also like us to start considering maybe some ladder ditches where we can help remove sediment from water inlets. So there's some really simple things that we can do as a county that can actually fully assist our, our salmon population. And so as a county, if we can look into our own personal fish pipes and our own personal culverts, and then also look at our ditching systems, that would probably have a pretty positive impact as we move forward environmentally.
And so, thank you, Commissioner Banks. What I will say is that those are great things to put on the survey. We will certainly make note of those also. But those kinds of ideas, as you look at the survey, would be perfect additions.
Commissioner Thompson.
Since Commissioner Banks is kind of adding to the survey, I would like to, for us to consider, what do we want to be the level of board interaction with other entities? And how do we integrate it so that we, as a, as a governing body, all understand it? And how do we get brief from staff? And how do we, basically that whole systems process that the county manager has as part of how we govern? I mean, it's big, it's gnarly, but if we start to tease away at it, I think we'll see progress. We don't, I don't go to NACO, nobody goes to NACO, nobody goes to Western Interstate Region. I mean, we, oh, you do? You're going to, you're going to West, oh, never, never mind. So, okay. But, but how do we integrate the larger world into what we do so that we can serve Clatsop County, the people and the place better? Thank you.
Any other, I see, Commissioner Banks.
County manager, in this process of surveying us, can we just throw in a survey to our staff? And then that way we can actually have some information to review in this process?
Yes, Commissioner, we will survey, staff will survey the other elected officials. And then we'll bring all that information along with your input. And then we can have that be the focus of the first retreat to talk about the strategic plan.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? And we'll just be looking then for the web link for the survey in Friday's update.
Yes, thank you, board.
Thank you very much, County Manager, and thank you, Terry Moore, for the update on the strategic plan and the review. Tremendous progress and anxious to, to move forward. Let's move on to the next item, which is the American Rescue Plan Act monies. We have 15 minutes assigned for this. It's on page 23 of our packet, and I'll turn it over to our county manager.
Thank you, Chair Quayle, members of the board. I'm going to have Monica take the, the, the largest burden of this conversation. But I do want to just frame the fact that, you know, our, our strategy is very iterative when it comes to the ARPA dollars. And that's, that's strategically tethered because things continually change. But one thing that we do know is that we have set aside some resource to, to help our, our core nonprofit organizations that have been strained during, during COVID. And so we've received a number of requests from some of those agencies, but we would like to take a more strategic approach to it. And so Monica's going to lay out the approach we used before. And we'll just seek the board's input about whether approaching that similarly now makes sense. And then if that does, then what we would do is we would go back, use that framework, and then bring a proposal to your board about the Year One funding through the ARPA for the nonprofits. So I'll leave Monica to take the rest. Thank you.
Sure. So as Don mentioned, we have set aside funding in the ARPA monies for items such as a navigation center, emergency shelter support system, and then other nonprofit services. And as you recall, the county came before you a couple of times now with a funding concept that is for, for sustained financial support for nonprofit services. And the idea behind this is looking at those critical, underfunded services that are provided to our most vulnerable populations throughout the county. And there are services that are provided by other agencies that the county is fully supportive of and, and in the past have provided resources to help fund. So our idea behind using these ARPA monies is to follow that same concept. So these would be services that are complementing the county's mission and other board priorities, services that are available throughout the county, and a significant return on investment to those targeted groups. And then also it's helping to ensure that these different agencies have the funding structure available to them to avoid, you know, not being able to provide these services throughout the county. So then rather than necessarily approving individual requests, the county's concept is to ask the board if they would be supportive of using the same approach for the ARPA monies that we have done for the county support dollars that have come from the general fund. And so if this is something that the board is supportive of as a whole, we would take those monies that have been set aside, as Don mentioned, for the next three years. We have approximately 125,000 set aside for the navigation center, 350 set aside for emergency shelter, shelter support system, and 525,000 set aside for other nonprofit support. But we have incremental amounts each year so that there's steady funding streams. And so we would be coming before your board, looking at all of those nonprofits that, that meet those criteria mentioned before. And so we would be coming before your board, looking at all of those nonprofits that that meet those criteria mentioned before. And making a recommendation. To the board to then enter into contracts that are going to allow more flexibility for each of these organizations to be able to use these monies.
Mr. Webb.
Thank you. I have a couple of general concerns about this. First of all, I think we need to be really, really careful. About raising expectations among our nonprofits. I thought when we first talked about this, that we were hoping to center on one-time expenditures. That would be kind of what I call infrastructure, you know, I mean, I love the idea of a refrigerated truck for the food bank. Things that with this money, we can now, you know, strengthen their capacity. But any funds that go to, you know, we struggled with this when we set our policy, which which I initiated. About funding for for our nonprofits. With the expectation that that we could maintain that support over time. This is a lot of money that's coming to individual profits. And I would have kind of preferred a more infrastructure-focused investment. Rather than than giving them, you know, operational money. Which which will go away in 2025. So I'm a little uncomfortable with that. The other issue for me is that this is incredibly Astoria-centric. And hey, it's my district. I'm. I should shut up and be quiet and, you know, be pleased, but that's not what we're here about. And I know that Seaside especially, which has many of the same homeless and other other problems that we do. Is taking some some pretty wonderful initiative or at least planning for some pretty good initiatives. I don't see any funding here for any 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 organizations other than Astoria.
If I could weigh in, Commissioner Webb, is that we are not proposing anything. All that we're doing is just sharing the requests we have received from these nonprofits. So we are not, we do, we have not developed the comprehensive strategy yet. We were just sharing what the underpinnings of the previous. Policy framework was and just asking your board whether that still makes sense. And if it does, we'll come back. With some funding recommendations based upon that strategy. Certainly, we are sensitive, as I know the nonprofits are, about the end date of these resources. Many of the requests we've received so far, and and these are unsolicited requests. We haven't asked for any requests. But the ones we have received, you know, some of those are for one-time expenses. And so I think that what you'll probably see as we walk through this is recommendations from staff that that really focus a lot. On those one-time expenditures that is that is helping these organizations increase their capacity. Whether it's through buildings, whether it's through training, whether it's through asset management. I mean, they will come up with some of those one-time. Options, but there are some some operating costs that they have incurred just due to the overwhelming need in the community. And so what we'll try to do is find a balance with that. But I just want to make it clear that that we haven't done that work yet. We just wanted to come to your board today and just see if the framework made sense before we start working on it. So.
Okay, I'm sorry. There's, and my my other concern is. Is this a time when we should ask to sit down, perhaps not all all of us and all of the elected officials in every city? But is this a time that maybe an intergovernmental meeting? Or at least a discussion might be in order for us to kind of brainstorm together? So that we know, I mean, I'm not even sure, you know, what's going on in all the cities. I tend to be, I mean, I live in Astoria, so I tend to be a bit more more knowledgeable about that. But I would love to hear from all of the other cities. To find out kind of what their strategic plan related to these funds are. And and what's what some of their ideas are. And and sort of to do an infill coordinated conversation. As I say, I'm not sure it requires. What, five counselors from five cities and, you know, our usual 30 or 40 people that we used to get when we had county-wide meetings. But but some kind of a group that of elects that could get together always with the sheriff at the table. Because because I think there are so many, I was a little disappointed. I guess in the expenditure of ARPA money, I didn't see it include. You know, I noticed that one of the standards, you know, was that organizations that provide county-wide services. I'm not sure there's any organizational entity in the county that that does more of that than the sheriff.
So if I may, Commissioner, at the beginning of all of this, we had a large number of meetings. And we met with the city managers and the mayors of each town. We met with the sheriff. We met with several of the nonprofit organizations. And and that is how we've developed this draft funding concept that we continue to. Bring before the board and make these revisions to. And so in all of those meetings, we were receiving the feedback from the individual cities. In regards to where they feel these resources would be best utilized. And so we have been having those those regular stakeholder meetings. And also we we included Cedar and the chambers on those meetings as well. To make sure that we are getting a diverse voice from all parts of the county.
Well, I just, I think that not including us in those discussions was perhaps regrettable. And I'm always uncomfortable when we reach out to other elected people in the county. And don't give them the the necessary respect to know that the Board of County Commissioners is listening as well. And since none, nothing in the staff report includes any of those conversations or or, you know, what the local initiatives are. I'm just a little bit uncomfortable.
Well, I have to be really clear that we have presented this before to the board. And we have discussed what we heard from the cities in work session. And so I think that, you know, staff's, you know, direction from the board early on with the ARPA. Was to reach out to our partner agencies and to talk with them. Each of the cities also received ARPA dollars themselves. So the county dollars are not the only ARPA receptacle. They're each of the cities received their their own. And but our our commitment always is to work with the cities so that we have coordinated muscle movement on on the highest priority areas. And that continues. Part of the iterative nature of this draft concept plan is that things will continually evolve. And so we want to to make sure we don't make decisions in year one that then limit. Decisions in year two and the environment's different. And so I do, I do agree with with Commissioner Webb's, you know, view that the cities and. And the elected officials and staff are part of that continuum of stakeholders that the county needs to be sensitive to. But I think staff has tried to be really good partners in that. And so and and the feedback we've received from the cities is incorporated in the draft concept plan. And there are a lot of their focus was on affordable housing and on the social services part on dealing with. With the first responders with mental health crisis. So.
It would have been very useful for us to know that, you know, I mean, I'd love some kind of a matrix. That talks about what the various recipients of ARPA monies in the county. Have have planned to do with their money so that we could take a look holistically. Of whether or not we are, you know, where is there infill needed? I mean, I want to see where the gaps are. And I I just wish that the commission. Or at least one commissioner who could report back to us would have been involved in some of these conversations.
Well, I appreciate the questions and certainly I think the questions about outreach to the rest of our community partners. And I really think that the idea of being strategic about how this money is going to be. Allocated towards infrastructure, capacity building versus operational costs, I think is important. Those are important points. I'm glad Commissioner Webb brought those up. I do know that there has been outreach to the cities. And I participated, and I don't remember exactly how, but it was, I think, at the invitation of the county manager. To participate in a discussion between the city manager and mayor of Warrington. When we were talking about the ARPA funds and and potential projects for Warrington. And then I don't know if there were subsequent discussions afterwards, but but certainly I think it. It has been important work that the county staff has been doing by doing this outreach to the city managers. They know what's best for their city and they certainly are in touch and are able to to provide the best feedback. So. Oh, Commissioner Banks has her hands up.
You know, Commissioner Webb brought up a valid point in regards to infrastructure. And as we look at how, you know, these ARPA funds can be spent, it is a portion of of what these these nonprofits can spend. Those monies on. I'm wondering if we can kind of split the pot a little bit and pull out maybe an infrastructure-type. Application. It doesn't have to be as much as the other, I guess, you know, financial pots per se. But that it's there so that if there is a nonprofit with a specific infrastructure need. That that is something that can be addressed. But I do agree that, I can't remember who stated it, that things change yearly. So much has changed since our first, you know, six months in this pandemic to where we are now. And so I agree that the allotment that we should have these funds available over the next until 2025 in some way or another. But I also agree with Commissioner Webb that the infrastructure portion, it is important. Because there have been needs that have arisen that, you know, because they're not receiving their normal amount of funds, that they need. You know, funded in order to address them. But thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Any other, I know that Commissioner Toyoka joined us and I don't know if you have any questions, comments?
Oh, hello, everyone. Sorry, I was a little late. I think I've been truly off-grid for about 10 days. I got. Two of us got dropped off by a bush pilot in the middle of Kodiak Island and. I just returned late, so a little beat up, a little tired, but on the airplane ride home, I had quite a few hours to. Reread everything and catch up and make sure I was ready. I'm sorry I'm late today. You know, just on this one issue, I just echo infrastructure is the key as opposed to. Program, you know, short-term program support. And I think as you read the ARPA and, you know, the intent. It is for the long-term sustaining, you know, and long-term development to get us through this timeframe, not a reactionary fund. So I agree fully on those comments.
I see Commissioner Thompson and then Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Thompson.
Very quickly, I think what this means for me is that I am redoubling my efforts to work on ecologically sustainable economic development. People need jobs. We need a tax base. It's all part of the same thing. We have to keep our people whole insofar as possible. And then do that economic development work so that we go forward into the future. More capable, stronger, with better services and a better tax base. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Webb?
I think I was about to say virtually the same thing that Commissioner Thompson did. But but it's always a good idea to remember that money spent on on infrastructure. Especially the smaller infrastructure projects tends to stay here. It's one of our best investments in the business. In the businesses that are local. You know, when we when we cut down trees, the the. There's very little income that actually comes to the county from that. But when we build a building and use a local contractor, most of the money stays right here in Clatsop County. And that's always a good reason to to, you know, give a shot in the arm. It's a way to help businesses and keep the money local.
Thank you, Commissioner. Have any other comments, questions? And what, I'll kind of ask our county manager next steps on this.
Sure. So I think that we've received some good input on this. We will go back and draw up some of the guidelines and we'll bring those back to the board focusing on the infrastructure. Piece of the nonprofit continuum and we will. Will share that to with our city partners at the staff level and. And then we'll come back and have a further discussion before we. We offer an actual funding plan because the underpinnings of the how we develop the funding plan are more important at this point. So. So, thank you.
Thank you, County Manager, and thank you, Monica. We'll go on to the next item, which is the boundary redistricting 2020 decennial census data. On page 36 of the packet. We have 30 minutes assigned to this. I am reminding folks, I'm going to have to jump off here at 11:00. So, Mr. Thompson will be will be leading at that point in time the discussion. But I'll turn it over to our county manager.
Thank you, Chair Quayle. I think this might be fairly quick conversation. But as as each of you know, we are in the redistricting process right now. Per the county charter, we have 120 days from the time that the census data was released. To make a recommendation to your board and the recommendation comes from our county clerk. About amendments to the to the district commissioner boundaries. We then have 45 days to then finalize those boundaries. And so we've been working with with Portland State University on a community engagement outreach plan. And we've also been working through GIS and Portland State Population Center. To come up with alternative district boundaries that would fulfill the charter requirements. So just to give you a little reference point, 120 days from when it, when the census data was released. Puts us at at really early December, December 10th roughly. And so so we don't have a lot of time to really go through this process. And I'm just saying this now, and I may or may not be here when this happens. But next time we go through a charter review committee, maybe somebody can look at those timelines that are in there for the. For the redistricting, give staff a little bit more time and the board. So that would be about December 10th and then we would have until roughly January 24th to actually finalize these. But the other consideration that we've discussed before is we have a may election. And there's a lot of work behind the scenes that goes into this. And it's really becomes foundational for us executing an election that doesn't have problems. And so the more time Tracy has, and I think she would agree with me. The more time she has, the better the results will be. So at this point, what staff has been. So at this point, what staff has been recommending, as I've had conversations, is we're really thinking that the best approach through this, and we're going to go through the community engagement process, which is really important, get feedback from the public about considerations that they believe are important. But really, given the timeframe, just making fairly minor, even though minor is a relative term, but may, fairly minor adjustments to the boundaries may make more sense now because of the timeline requirements. And so you could make larger changes, but those larger changes would also raise a number of downstream issues that would require more time to really contemplate. And so, so I'm not thinking that's probably the best approach. The charter requires this to happen after the census data is released every 10 years. There's nothing to say that any board, just like in a charter review process, couldn't do it more frequently. But at this point, what our recommendation would be is to keep it small. As I say, small, we all know that every boundary change has a stakeholder involved. And so where those actual lines are drawn will matter, I know, to, to your board and they'll matter to the residents. And so we will need to get into more detailed conversations about maps, more detailed conversations about boundaries, and that will come very soon. But really, just presenting today that, that at least where staff is sitting right now is that it really seems that the, the lesser change option is probably the most viable as we move forward. I do want to let Tracy and Scott and Sarah, who are part of our PSU team, to offer any feedback or comments to your board. But, but we just wanted to provide this update. The community engagement process is starting soon. And we'll get maps, definitive maps that we can share with your board. But that's kind of where we are right now. So this is an update to that process. Tracy, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. During this process of the reapportionment with congressional, with, excuse me, the commissioner boundaries, I'm also going to be taking a look at precinct lines. So at the same time, I can adjust any precinct lines, combine precincts as needed. There just seems to be no rhyme or reason left of the precincts. I've been finding lines in the middle of places that I think, why? And it's like, well, there was a reason probably way back when it was drawn. So I will also be cleaning the precinct lines up. So if you have any concerns yet, just be sure and let me know. I'm not going to do a lot. I appreciate Dawn's advice with moving just the minimal that we need. And yes, there is no reason why we can't do it again in like five years. So anyway, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tracy. Scott or Sarah would like to?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And board members, it's a pleasure to meet you virtually. It has been an absolute honor and pleasure to work with your staff. They've been very professional in this process and I really much, very much appreciate that. And I have to say, I completely agree with the recommendation from your county manager. With this tight timeline, you know, larger changes frankly would be more difficult. We will include some observations on those in our final report that you may want to consider in the future. But at this stage, I think minimizing the effect of the changes is probably a good way to go with this tight, tight timeline. And we propose to do that after having received the public input. There, with the criteria that you've outlined and the state and the charter require, it's good guidance, but there will have to be compromise on some of those. You just can't meet all of the criteria. So we'll, we'll see what kind of feedback we get from the public and from you and your staff and prepare a recommendation based on that. And I have to say, for most of the districts, the percentage change is not that big. The districts are about 8,200 some people. And as you see in the, in your packet, the adjustment that's necessary is a pretty small percentage of that. So I don't think we're looking at sweeping changes in this. So if you have questions, I'm here to answer them. But I'm looking forward to the, the public process that's going to be kicking off next week.
Thank you. Any questions of staff or consultants? Commissioner Webb?
I'm sorry, this may be kind of a stupid question, but I'm operating kind of about 50 points below my IQ level right now. On page 38 of our handout, the map that was distributed, I don't understand what the red arrows mean. I'm sorry.
Commissioner, if I could answer that, it suggests the simplest ways to adjust boundaries. If you look at the numbers that need to change in that packet, the simplest way to look at it is districts four and five do need to expand. Relative to the other districts and the population change, they need to have population added to districts four and five. And so the easiest way to proceed is to do that frankly in the areas of higher population density. If you're, which frankly for that means Astoria and Seaside for those districts. It just turns out that way. That way, you can, you can have shifts in population with relatively small geographic shifts in the district lines. Once you increase districts four and five, then there's shifting also to balance things out from districts two going into one and district three going into one. But that is the most straightforward way to do it.
I guess I don't, I guess I'm still, for instance, the, between districts three and four, those two arrows, they mean that this recommendation would be moving district four to the west into Astoria?
That's correct.
And moving district three to the west into district one?
Correct.
Okay. And I see, I understand. I'm sorry.
If I could, Commissioner, basically what those arrows are just representing is really where their surplus and where there are deficits. And where's the, where is the most logical point right now? And again, this is without public input and this is without board input about the actual boundaries. But where is the population that could help us rebalance it without making major boundary shifts? And so the way that it works out is that basically, you know, district four would have to move a little west. As you said, district three could move a little bit west, as you said, because Commissioner Quayle in district one needs to move further west also. And so, and then Commissioner Toyoka in district two will have to move up. And Commissioner Thompson would have to also move up in district five. And so that's just kind of, it's almost diagramming the river flow, kind of the currents.
I'm sorry. I just didn't understand that.
I just, I thought it just meant all signs point to district one.
They kind of do.
It is district one for a reason, Chair Quayle.
Commissioner Toyoka?
I just wanted to say, you know, I do appreciate, you know, the process we are going through because it does involve everything. The communications are all about population, transportation, communities of interest. Not one political statement's made when we're looking at these boundaries, which is wonderful because that's what it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be the voice of the people, not the voice of politics, which is wonderful. I wish that our staff and PSU could speak to our state government and talk about that when they're doing their maps. But on the other, the real thing I wanted to say was as we develop this and have these districts reappointed, I know it's a workload for the staff, but I'd like to consider, you know, in a broken record way, that we align everything else according to these five districts, from citizen advisory committees to everything else. So then every group of, every community, every group has representation directly from a commissioner and a voice at the table. So as we, you know, move through this process, I'd like to see us continue to move. As we have five districts, let's keep it five sets of representation for the communities instead of advisory committees and things bringing up six or seven different groups. Maybe we can focus on the fives. We have that direct representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. I'm going to have to jump off. So I'm going to go ahead and transition this meeting over to Commissioner Thompson to lead for the rest of the way. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a good rest of your day.
Thank you. And Commissioner Thompson is going to exercise the chair's prerogative and take a five-minute bio break, come back in five, because we're going to start. I don't know if there are, I don't know if there are gender impacts on this, but when I'm, when I'm chairing the meeting, I like those, a really get up and move around and take care of physical needs breaks. So I crave everyone's indulgence in that. We're about a minute away. We're on page 39 of our agenda when we get back. All right, I have 11:06 on my calendar, so I would hope that staff is ready to begin. Teresa, are we still being recorded now?
Yes, we are.
Thank you, ma'am. We are, as I said, on page 39 of the agenda, the comprehensive plan update. This is a consummation devoutly to be wished. Yes, Director Henrickson? I'm going to turn this over to you to walk us through this with grace.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. On September 28th, there was a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee. And just as the board has been doing in August and September, they were also looking at the third draft of Goals One through Four, the comprehensive plan. And I've included their comments that were submitted before the meeting as one of the exhibits, beginning on page 91 of your agenda package. And then also the recommendations that came out of the meeting on September 28th are included, beginning on page 107 of the agenda package. And I'm just going to briefly summarize what those voted on revisions are. In Goal One, there was not support to eliminate the citizen advisory committees after this process is completed. There was support, however, to continue to utilize the citizen advisory committees moving forward. In Goal Two, which is land use planning, there was discussion about expanding the planning area boundaries to include the portions of the Columbia River, Fort Clatsop, and also out to the territorial water boundary in the Pacific Ocean. And then there was not support to make the planning area boundaries and the commissioner boundaries co-terminus. And we will talk some more about that moving forward next week on October 13th when we go through our goal training. But just for some preliminary background, the, as you are aware from our previous agenda item, you know, every 10 years, we go through a redistricting process based on population counts. And when the comprehensive plan was established, the planning areas were set up based on geographic units and geologic units and based upon issues and concerns and sort of a cultural approach. So what's happening in southwest coastal, for example, are, their concerns are often very different from what is, we're hearing in the Elsie Jewel area, for example. So I just want to point that out and we will discuss that more on October 13th at our work session. And then also in Goal Two, there was a recommendation to continue to retain the policies that were related to climate change. In Goal Three, which is agricultural lands, there was a motion that was approved to support agricultural practices that would protect drinking water and fish habitat. And then, of course, Goal Four saw the most discussion and recommended revisions. And that's our forest lands goal. So there was a recommendation to delete language that discussed the habitat conservation plan, to add language that regarding drinking water sources and protection of those sources, to include languages that, language that forest should also be conserved for carbon sequestration. There was discussion and recommended motions regarding the notification of water districts when there are forest activities that could impact water quality. They revised, recommended revising policy I, which is the off-road vehicle policy, and then creating a new policy P, which had to do carbon offset education. And those are all detailed, again, in your board packet as Exhibit F, beginning on page 107. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions. And I will be incorporating the board's discussion from this meeting into the planning. board's discussion from this meeting into the Planning Commission agenda package, which will go out this afternoon. And their next meeting to make a final recommendation to the board on these goals will be October 12th at 10:00 a.m. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I see Commissioner Banks has her hand up.
Um, so I went through this in the same manner that I went through the original document, Director Hendrickson. So I can, I can go through it again in that fashion, or I can email you my thoughts, or we can have a conversation this afternoon. But, so I was reading this, and one thing that popped out to me that I didn't read prior, or maybe it was there and I didn't remember it, that this is going, this comprehensive plan is going to be revised every five to seven years. And I kind of had a bit of a moment concerning how long this process is taking. I feel like I'd like our county staff to do something other than the comprehensive plan in their life. And so a review of this every five to seven years just circles us back to, are we talking a review after it's completed every five or seven years? Like, what are we talking about here?
So ideally, a county or a city should not let their comprehensive plan sit 40 years before they crack it open and look through it. I originally came from Florida before I came here, and Florida has a system set up by the state where every five to seven years, you go through a comprehensive, an update. You review your policies to make sure either have they been completed, are they still relevant, and are there new ones that need to be added? And it's actually, I think, a better practice than leaving it for 10 or 20 years and then going through a bigger review process. Also, if we had been subject yet to periodic review, we would be going through this process approximately every seven years or so. So I think we would be consistent with what best practices would be.
Okay. I just had to ask because I will be frank, I feel like that this may take us five years. I was, I was having a moment of, wow, you know, let's, let's take a deep breath and do other work and then come back to it. But as you, as you've explained it, it makes, it makes more sense. I will let anybody else make any comments before I move on to my, my specific comments.
Certainly. Other commissioners, Commissioner Webb, I see you're eager.
I'm not eager. I don't have enough energy to be eager for anything right now. Yeah, I just wanted to, to thank Gail for, this is, this report I found was just incredibly cogent, and I think, I think including the, the motions and the discussion points and the voting was really, really helpful. I really captured a, an important part of the discussion. I really, really appreciate that. I also would like to say that I, I really, I, I've, I've had the, the commission meetings and the work sessions that I have not been able to physically attend, I have watched the tapes of all of them. So that, that may confuse me a little bit about what was said by whom when, but I get confused easily anyway. And I can't remember at what point it was that, I think, actually, it was at our last work session, that Commissioner Toyoka, I think, brought up a point that I really support, and, and that is that he was calling for kind of, and let me know, Commissioner Toyoka, if you're, if I'm not quoting you correctly, but, but that it seemed as if it might be a good idea. And I don't know whether you said it was after each goal or, or something, that we have somewhat of a public meeting process. And we were kind of headed in that direction in the early days of the comp plan, you know, where we had, that was back in the good old days of onsite communal, real, real people-to-people, person-to-person meetings. And, and I felt it was really useful. And I think that the way, you know, there really hasn't been much about the comp plan that has been brought to the public, to the general public. And even though I think it's always an issue with comp plans, which I have done a number of, it's, it's always a, what's the right word, a struggle, because there's so much background material that has to be brought forward in the revision of a comp plan. And it's, you know, the historical nature of what, what, what the entity has been through, et cetera. But you also want broad public comment. And so it's always a struggle to devise how you, how you inform the public in a way that they can be, have maximum input and useful input into the profit, into the process when you're going to public meetings. So I just would like to really support that suggestion and help us maybe try to figure out how we do that best by, by not making our general citizen have to go back and to research for two years, but to, to be inclusive and to, Gail does such a wonderful job of presenting information that I, I think there's definitely a way we can do that, to inform the public in a way that doesn't take them hours to review the issues. Sorry, Gail, I didn't mean to put one more item on your table, but, but I, I do think, I just think that communicating with the public is a really good idea. And so I'd love to see that integrated into the, into our process from now on. Maybe after each goal, that's the way I've usually done it.
Commissioner Webb, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I absolutely agree with the way you characterize your writing. Commissioner Hendrickson, or sorry, I want to give you that promotion now. Director Hendrickson writes extremely well, very clear, very cogent. The struggle, the nexus is how to get people involved when they may or may not want to be or need to be, because they are going to live by what. I am reminded periodically that many people don't want to, they cast their ballot and they kind of want to be done. Other people want to inform and guide us all along the way, and we have to listen to everybody, including the people who don't speak to us very often. But I like your point about giving them opportunity to do so and looking for ways to empower people to speak to us in a way that is efficient and effective for them and for us. So I really appreciate that point. Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Toyoka, you had a point?
But just, just kind of going along with the whole discussion right now is like, you know, and what Commissioner Banks brought up, the five to seven, I fully support, you know, Director Hendrickson, you know, Gail's five to seven years, because, you know, the more often you, you update and revise the policy, the less daunting it is to have to, you know, basically reinvent the wheel after 40 years. Because whether it's policies, practices, everything's are outdated. So if we kept it on that shorter cycle, it would be less daunting on staff. And as far as the public input, I think that, you know, for the most part, people want their voices heard. And if we provide that forum, it'll, it'll only help the process. If we do it from citizen advisory committees or more of an open forum instead of just an isolated group, it's just like if the five, five commissioners met and said, this is what we're going to do, we'd be, we'd be operating in a vacuum. We need that input. We need everybody's voices to, to form what the direction we are going to take. And I think if we started at that citizen advisory committee level with a public forum, public input, it only provides more of a voice, more of a solid direction what our community wants to go. And if it's consistent, then people only, they would have a true place to voice their concerns, questions, comments. A lot of the information, a lot of the emails, telephone calls, whatever we get nowadays, are very reactionary. If we have it a consistent forum where, you know, anyone in the county can go to a meeting and voice their opinion, then we have a more proactive system. And I think that's the direction we need to be in, is more proactive and less reactionary. Thank you.
Very well, very well said, Commissioner, proactive and not reactionary. So here's what I wrote. The issues that I see geographic diversity, economic diversity in terms of class and income, and cultural diversity, we are not of, we are not all alike. So I see a process that's designed to be responsive, inclusive, attractive, and efficient. So I'm going to say that again, responsive, inclusive, attractive, given whatever level of engagement our community wants to have, and efficient. We've all seen how long this has taken, the, the load on staff, the load on our community members who've put heart, soul, time, thought, energy into this. What I am, what I am seeing that gives me pause for concern, a weaponized process. Land use is often a weaponized process. Politics, governance, daily life, what I'm looking for is we design and implement and monitor a process that is respectful and curious of all points of view. And I'm going to, I'm going to point to one of the pieces of feedback that we got. If you look on page 98 of your packet, colleagues, it is our understanding that the Board of Commissioners, in quotes, "reports to the citizens of the county" per the organization chart on, on the county's website. I'm going to skip a few lines. It is the citizens of the county who should be in the driver's seat, in quotes and capitalized, and as elected officials, the commissioners should be servants of their public. Now, I consider myself a servant leader, this on page 98, at the end of point one. But when I see this, I see what I think is a fundamental misapprehension of the role of advisory groups. I am grateful for the time and the skill, I mean, generations-long in some cases. Cheryl Johnson, I'm talking about you. But we have people who are so interested and so committed, they have put enormous stretches of time and thought into this. I want to honor and use their input. On the other hand, that is not the only voice. It cannot be in the driver's seat. We commissioners are the governing body. The reason the public is there is because the public elects us to be the governing body of the county. In my mind, we are guilty of dereliction of duty if we inappropriately delegate our authority. So we have the responsibility to use our authority in ways that are legal and ethical. We're committed to being fiscally prudent. We're committed to having, I think, that respectful and curious approach to everybody in the county, not just people who think that they are entitled to be in the driver's seat because their, their perception is fact and their wish should be law. So all the way from those folks to the folks who say, look, I voted for you or I didn't vote for you, I put you in office, do your job, make it possible for me to live my life, and don't bother me. But we, and, and sometimes they come out and tell us if they think that we're failing in that, but often they don't have, if you're working three jobs, if you're couch surfing, if you have young children or older people you're taking care of, if you are frail yourself, I mean, there are a variety of reasons that people do not attend meetings. The challenge before the planning director and all of us colleagues is how do we have a process that is welcoming to all of the different kinds of people so that we can have a balanced, informed, compassionate, effective governance? I mean, that's what I want to see. I kind of preached it this morning. So Commissioner Banks, respond to me, please.
Well, I, I love, you know, you did a great job just, you know, expressing, expressing those thoughts, and I would like to add one verb, or maybe it's an adverb, I'm not an English teacher, easy. I want this to be easy to be involved in for our community. So in all of those adjectives or whatever you were using, I would also like it to be easy. And I feel like, you know, Commissioner Toyoka's idea of town halls and five districts matching the commissioners' districts, I feel like that allows things to be easy for everyone, not just someone who has the time. And so I, I, I just, I love to bring more voices into, into the conversation and hear, hear more feedback from the community. And, and so, you know, I just, I, I wanted to give Commissioner Toyoka kind of my agreeance with the continuing forward motion to, to matching the advisory, the, the Planning Commission to the five commissioner seats. That way, we have a very linear, very organized, you know, direction from, from public all the way up to commissioner. We, they, we're organized, everybody has an equal voice, because I, I feel like an equal voice in our community is important, especially for those folks you listed that don't have time. Can we segue off into some of more, more of my linear brain thinking?
Hang on a second, because I'm glad you're linear, but let me just get some feedback from Commissioner Webb and then Commissioner Toyoka about what I just said. Does that, I love easy, okay? I don't know how to say it, but you said it, so easy. How do we make this easy for people? What do you think, Commissioner Webb?
Well, I, I think that my earlier suggestions were, were, were in effort to do that. I think the trick always is to make sure that your direct advisory people, who are participating in a tremendously complicated process, obviously are expected to, to do a lot of homework. That's just the way most of our advisory committees are, especially, especially doing comp plans. But at the same time, it's, I think it's our responsibility to provide the citizenry in general with information that is substantive enough to help their perspective, to inform their perspective. And I, you know, I hate dumping that issue on, on, on Gail, who already has too much on her plate, but, but, but it probably could be exerted from, you know, from the, the stuff that we've already prepared. And so absolutely, I also am increasingly moving toward advisory committees that are, that are more targeted toward commissioner districts. There's, there's always a bit of an elephant in the room when it comes to, to the southwest part of the county. But, but I think that, I guess I, I just, I just think that it's an easier thing. I mean, it's, they, I mean, I certainly want my constituents to know that I want to hear from them. I, you know, I, I want to hear their opinions about things, their perspectives. I want to hear their personal experience with things. And, and I think that's easier if, you know, I look at some of the, some of the groups that I think were really high-functioning, like, like the Northeast Advisory Group, that was, those people all represent, were representing, you know, came from one commissioner district. And I think that's more efficient. I, I think it's, it's one of the reasons that I'm, I think I'm kind of in form, I'm really in favor of PSU's recommendation about having, you know, urban districts and rural districts. I don't know how, that's not to be discussed here, I'm sorry, didn't mean to digress, but, but, but one of the advantages is that, that you have, you do have more commonality of interest. Of course, at the same time, I love the idea that if all of us, if each of us has a significant amount of rural areas in our, in our districts, that it turns our attention that it turns our attention to the fact that just because we don't have a lot of people in rural areas, we still have a obligation to see their perspective and to serve their needs.
We've got a lot of place, don't we? Could I move on to, to Toyoka? Is that okay? Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Toyoka, what's your point of view?
I'm sorry, but you froze on my screen and I missed the first point. What is your question?
Well, we're talking about how do we move forward? What direction do we give to staff? How are we thinking about what we see in this package? And I'm jealous you got to Kodiak, I'm telling you, as an Alaskan, to be in Kodiak in October. So, um, so, so what's your response about the best way to move forward to have? And what I said in my mind was the balance between the expert in-depth advice we have and the whole spectrum of people who don't have much time or inclination to be part of this, but would still like to invite them and inform them and make it easy for them to participate?
Well, I think the key is, you know, everybody wants their voice heard. And we, it's, it's incumbent upon us to provide the opportunity. So just, I think having that consistency, having opportunities for voices to be heard is key. And it's going to be, so it can be community-driven upward. Now, as a commissioner, it's, you know, if, for my district, I am, I need to take all that information, filter it, and then put together the what is best suits and the needs of the majority of the people. Because there will be divergent views on any issue. So you have to, you know, that's our, incumbent upon us as the one they elected to represent our district is to, you know, provide the best representation. So I think in, in doing that, we need to have those avenues of communication. I think that is key. And I think of those citizen advisory committees, you know, if they're more open forum instead of, then they have, that is the first and probably the primary step of getting community, broader community input at those opportunities meetings. So then it's not just, again, a group of so many people. It is the entire community providing input. They can filter that information and provide that to the Board of Commissioners. So I think it's a matter of providing opportunities, number one. And then how do we assimilate that information, filter it, and then bring it to the next level? So, and again, I just, the key component, I think, is in, if you walk around your district or even the county, people just want to be heard. They want their input. And the more, more opportunities we provide that, I think that is we're doing due diligence and doing our, performing our, our job professionally.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Well, in my district, which is the whole southern half of Clatsop County and about to get to be a little bit more of that. It isn't, I have some folks who think that being heard means being obeyed. You see, they, they think they belong in the driver's seat. So you may not have folks in your, your district like that. I have people in my district who are sharply and deeply divided. And so bridging that and harmonizing that and balancing that is my main job as a commissioner. What I wonder is if some of the folks who want the level of control over their government, do they need to? So I've asked the county manager, look at the dollars and cents of it so we can have a data-supported discussion of, "Look, if you want that level of control, if you want to be the ones to determine and be in the driver's seat, you have to have a legal structure and you have to get elected to lead that legal structure. Because then you can set policies, you can enforce policies. Because it's not realistic to say, spend taxpayer dollars from all over the county to provide service levels that we say we're entitled to, that's more than can happen, given the levels of funding and the levels of authority we have." So I think there needs to be a further specific community conversation in our southwest district, what best serves the will of all the voters here, of all the neighbors here. Because you know that, that we've got Cana Beach lost population. It's now more second homeowners, transient occupancy. We can regulate short-term rentals all day long. We can't keep day trippers from coming here. Although I did see in Venice, they're going to institute a policy where people have to get permission to enter Venice and pay a fee. And if there get to be too many of them, it'll be cut off. I don't know if we're headed there or not. But as, as Terry Moore pointed out, we've got a different set of challenges and opportunities facing us. How do we go forward and work peacefully, harmoniously, to hear each other with that tender curiosity and respect so we go forward to build a workable world? That's how we heal the environment. That's how we have a workable, workable economy. It's, it's with those standards. That's what I think. So that's my soapbox again this morning. Thank you. Commissioner Bangs, you had specific suggestions. Let's get into those. We've got 25 more minutes.
Okay, so page 73, the bottom paragraph. "The potential impacts of climate change along with increased demand for residential units will continue to result in habitat loss for elk, another big game in the county." And then it goes to "policies that provide for a range of appropriate landscaping." Instead of using the word policies, because I hate enacting more policies, I would love it to be educational materials available to constituents or to community members outlining potential appropriate landscaping and fencing materials versus us telling property owners what to do. Let's instead offer education for what those properties, you know, owners could do. So it's just, it's a verbiage there. I acknowledge that it's going to be an issue and it is an issue. I mean, our elk and big game is an issue. It's just, let's twist the verbiage so it's less us telling them what to do.
Well spoken. You might be a teacher.
It's true. And then, uh, page 77. Policy E, I think is what it was labeled. The, the new policy E. Policy, I don't know what, it's the second one from the bottom. It says, "The county shall incorporate objectives and policies into the comprehensive plan and its implementing ordinances to mitigate and alleviate impacts from climate change on agricultural lands and activities." I would much rather say that the county should look into objectives and policies. Um, this is, this is a very finalizing statement or a very specific we must do statement. And I, I have difficulty in, in being pigeonholed so firmly into a statement. Again, climate change is a ongoing situation and it's ever developing and evolving. And so I, I feel like we should not have any, like, firm statements or policies that haven't been already outlined by the state. I feel like we, as a county, don't have those staff members on our staff to be able to direct us. And, and so we have to take our, our policies from the state level that they have. So that's just, that's just a consideration on, on twist, changing those words a little bit to be less definitive. And then page 88.
Commissioner Bangs, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So if you make it, because what I hear is you want to have it be more responsive. And that gets to our conversations about how do, how and when do we update our comprehensive plan? How do we monitor and, and have input, have data on the effect of what we're doing or not doing? That's what I, what I hear is your concern that we are too prescriptive and we are too ambitious for something that we can't deliver because we don't have the resources. Okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
And so be, be more responsive or, or be more, I, I like the direction you're going.
Monitor. If we, if, um, if we incorporate objectives and policies into the comp plan to, and so on, to monitor impacts from climate change on agriculture and activities and, and investigate, investigate how to solve, how to address them. So what you say to staff is, we, we want you to gather the data, but we don't expect you to have the depth of staffing to be able to address all of them. But watch and, and take it into account. Give us feedback, give neighbors feed. Is that what you're getting at?
I just feel like that this is going to be an evolving conversation and that later on, the state is probably going to add another goal to our plate, and that goal being climate change. And so as the conversation evolves from the state level, I think we need to, instead of enacting policies, we need to be listening and, and evolving versus stepping our toes out there too soon, I guess. Because we don't have the profession, the professionals on staff in order to enact policies that wouldn't have unintended consequences.
Okay, but we can monitor and give feedback both to the state and to our consent. So Commissioner Webb, does that address your concerns, do you think?
No, actually, that's contrary to my concerns. First of all, the state has done a great deal of work. Scientific work and also work aimed at the land use planning process on climate change. There's an enormous amount of very credible scientific data. And in fact, LCDC is, we could bring in a couple of people to give some pretty terrific presentations about what we know already about climate change. Specifically on the coast, LCDC, they've done a lot of that. So I think that, that there is a lot of very good credible science and state mandates. And I can't remember, Gail, whether, has, has DLCD issued a, any kind of declaration? That's not the right word. Guidance about local comp plans dealing with, with climate change?
They have not. And I specifically called Lisa Phipps, who is our representative from Department of Land Conservation and Development, to discuss this issue with her. Internally, as a department, they are still working through the process themselves as to which way they would like to go with climate change. One avenue of discussion is that counties and cities would be required to update each of their goals to incorporate climate change policies. The other avenue is, as Commissioner Bangs discussed, is to create a completely separate goal, Goal 20, where you would address climate change for each of the 18 goals, but it would just be in one particular standalone section.
All right. What I, what I hear both commissioners saying, and I'm going to kind of move us along, is that we need to partner with our state agencies. I, I do think we need to monitor local impacts, costs and benefits. We said science, data. I mean, I agree with all of that. Commissioner Toyoka, do you have a further comment on this?
Well, I do. You know, there's, you know, I probably read as much as the rest of, you know, any other commissioner as far as a lot of these policies. And a lot of the information out of Salem I read is just very conflicting, you know? And some of the heartburn I have about it is some, you know, some of the climate change people on one side say, you know, "We got to change our forest practices." But then there is a fallout that if we don't harvest a certain manage, manage our forests in a certain way, it'll impact the wildlife. And so we're going to see, you know, degradation of elk and deer and all these different animals because we don't manage properly. So there's so much information out there. And I, I can bring you, one scientist from Salem says one thing and another one that says a direct opposite. So that's hard. I think we have to do, like you said, Commissioner Thompson, due diligence for our community, take in that information and assimilate how it impacts our rural Oregon, you know, our Clatsop County. And then look at the impacts here and how do we best manage within our own county? You know, look at state practices, look at state policy. But then we have to see how it impacts us locally. I agree with you on that.
Okay, so thank you. So, so Commissioner Webb, I'm going to hold you for a minute because, because I want to move us along a little bit. So hold that thought, all right? So Director Henrickson, does this give you adequate feedback? Are you able to form something, a coherent written policy? Or do you need to speak with us further? Maybe one-on-one with the county manager or in some other fashion? Are you good to go?
Commissioner Thompson, if the question is specifically for the one policy that we're discussing on page 77, I think I understand what the commission is looking for. We will be going back to the Planning Commission next Tuesday, and my agenda is going out this afternoon. So I don't know that there will be time between now and this afternoon to, to have further discussions with the county manager and the commissioners. I can summarize what I have understood to be the, the board's concerns and the direction that they would like to go and provide that to the Planning Commission for their consideration at next week's meeting.
Okay, so I think what we've got here is a thrust, which is, you know, thinking globally and acting locally. I'm telling you, stuck in the 60s or 70s, but still with current data, this is our people and our place. How do we honor it and protect it? How do we heal it? And that's, that's what we're looking for. Commissioner Webb, do you still need to speak or can we move on? What do you think? Are you ready?
Well, I would just like to, um, to remind the commissioners that part of our strategic plan, when we established the issue of environmental quality, was the fact that we do have this, um, it's not really a disparity, well, sometimes it is, that we, the, the comp, the comp plan process has certainly indicated that we don't have enough geological and other on-the-ground information about the situation in Clatsop County. You know, we all, we have the recurring issue of how to regulate development of wetlands. We have an ongoing discussion about riparian areas. We have an ongoing discussion about the, the quality and quantity of water in our, in all of our watersheds. And I think we have begun during the past year to, you know, we, we started to make some progress in getting more of this information. And I certainly.
Okay, can I stop you then? Because remember that we are going forward under the auspices of AOC to do that water inventory.
Yes, that's part, that's exactly right. That's part of what, of what we're doing. That's one of the many things that we're doing.
So make difference on that and give us something to stand on, then I think that gives us a model that we can maybe address those other issues.
Well, I think, yes, I, I mean, I think we're definitely headed in that direction. I think that we, you know, we are already, in the last couple of years, we have, we have certainly improved our understanding of many, you know, the crest is an ongoing participant in that kind of thing. I know that all of our departments, for instance, just on the issue that, that Commissioner, that I guess you brought up earlier, or no, Commissioner Bangs did, about, about understanding, I think that our, about what our needs are for, for physical issues that our Public Works Department needs to be working on for the restoration of salmon. And those guys know a whole hell of a lot about, about those issues. And every time they do any roadwork, it's, it's really high on their, on their priority list. So, so we're getting there. But I think we, well, I mean, are we just going to? I'm sorry, I'm a little frustrated about the way this whole review discussion is going. Yeah. I don't, um, I, I don't think we're, we're doing this in a manner that leads to consensus about individual issues. If one person, if one- If one person, if one commissioner goes through a list of issues on page, this page and that page and that page, I, I don't understand why we're not discussing each of these issues all together. I've spoken before about my very great frustration in the fact that we, as a commission, do not do enough discussions. I mean, where we're all talking about the same thing, just, just the way we are about this, about this particular issue. I have.
So then maybe, if I can just pause you for a minute. So county manager, if, is there a way that we can design our work sessions so that we are more responsive to Commissioner Webb's concerns? Because I don't know if there is or not. I don't know if we have enough time to go into the depths, but do we do one-on-ones with you? Do we do group discussion? How do we resolve differences? I mean, it's a governance issue and we're, it's a good problem to have. Can you help us?
Well, I mean, what I would say, Chair Thompson, members of the board, is that certainly we need to, to get clarity on what the board needs out of, out of these work sessions. And, and then we can structure them, how they need to be. I think the one limitation has been and continues to be is just time. Time seems to be a limit for almost everything we do right now. And I guess, you know, it's, it's part of, of us trying to accomplish a lot of things, but it's also us trying to still be sensitive to the board's process, the governance process, and certainly the community engagement process, which both are very vital to us. And I think that the two lenses that I always look at as we go through these is how are we serving the board? And how are we serving the community in terms of input? So what I would say is I don't have any, any immediate answer to that question. I think that I can circle back with individual board members and just talk about what adjustments we might make so that, so that Commissioner Webb and other commissioners feel that the, that the discussion part is really serving the board's governance goals.
Thank you, County Manager. And it occurs to me that what I hear the need for is what we used to call a board retreat. In a time of COVID, I don't know how we do a board retreat, but this is where we, in my experience, hash out differences in philosophies and approaches and styles. And we find ways to hear each other, to share each other. We've got, you know, the, the very real and very appropriate guidelines for public meetings laws. And we need to be able to be informal and unguarded enough to work out our differences because we are all here to help each other and we are all also part of the problem. Cause we've got to figure out, where's my blind spot? Where, where do I have the good answer? How do I work with other people so we can see everybody's process to develop sound public policies that staff can then implement and monitor? And we modify as called for, whether it's the comp plan or anything else we do. That's our model. We do the best we can as a group in any moment, codify something, hand it to staff and say, here's what we want you to do. And then they do it. And we listen to them and every stakeholder we have to see what are the impacts? What are the results? Where's the science? Where's the data? Okay. Commissioner Bangs, what do you have to say?
Well, two things. I have five minutes before I have to return to my, my job. And I, I do have some policy, very basic verbiage things. And then a comment from Cheryl Johnson that I wanted to, that I, I felt was a good one. And I'll talk to Gail about that probably a little bit later and talk about the verbiage and so on and so forth. But I just wanted to make note, just because I go through a document line by line and, and, and pick out statements or pick out portions of, it doesn't limit the rest of my commissioners from doing the same thing. That, that methodology is, is available to all of our commissioners. And just because I choose to use that methodology to keep myself on track, doesn't stop anybody else from doing so also. And since I'm, I'm taking a moment on page 88, Gail, I think you and I may have had a miscommunication, or Director Henrickson, I think you and I may have had a miscommunication. I would love to see all of those campgrounds listed, the county campgrounds, the, the state campgrounds. I'd like to still see all of them listed here because I feel like it gives a robust, multi, multi, you know, faceted picture of what we have here in our county. So if we could keep Kalouchi Creek and Big Creek and, and Carnahan and David Douglas and all of those listed here and Westport and Halem, I think that that would be great. I don't remember why they got Xed out and I'm, I just fear that was a miscommunication. Maybe I'm wrong, Gail.
No, I did understand what you were asking for, Commissioner Bangs. The reason I didn't include them is because Goal Four specifically talks about forest resource lands and the properties that you had mentioned, which are definitely worthy of being singled out, are not in that forestry resource zone category. I think when we talk about Goal Eight, which is recreational needs, I think this is the perfect place to put those resources.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. We're not at Goal Eight yet.
We're almost at time. You've got three minutes. Did you want to go to Cheryl Johnson's comment as you're, as we're?
I have, I have a hard time doing that because I can't find it because it's in my packet at home. I have only my laptop here. But I have two other page numbers and policies.
Okay. Head on then.
Okay. So page 89. Page 89, and I wrote down policy F, the designation of a new park. I just, so I get the statement, but I, the way it's, way, the way it comes to me feels just off. And it's just a verbiage thing. And so I can probably talk to Gail a little bit more later about it. It just felt odd. And I don't know if any other commissioners had, had that feeling. And then the other one was page 122. Let me scroll to it. Page 122. Policy A. Oh, that was the five to seven years. So never mind, we already discussed it. So, and then anything else that pops up, Gail, I'll email you or give you a phone call. And then when I get home, I'll reread Cheryl's comment. Cause I'm not even 100% sure it was Cheryl's, but I'll read that Ms. Johnson's comment and then I'll, I'll circle back to you, Gail. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we're at one minute till and I want to honor the boundaries. I don't want to cut anybody off, but I want to honor the boundaries because we've got working people here at other jobs. You've got commissioners who are devoted to whatever time it takes. So trying to be balanced and harmonious and respectful here. I thank everyone for your attention and your commitment to the process. It's, we're honored to have your participation in Clatsop County government. That's what I would say, just speaking for myself, but I think also for my colleagues. And if any other commissioner has concerns, I'm pretty sure that I'm happy to hear them. I'm pretty sure that the county manager is happy to hear them because what else does he have to do in life except listen to our concerns, right? And then turn us into a coordinated muscle movement. Commissioner Webb, you wanted to say something?
Yes. I just want to record my objection to this process. I, you know, I could probably produce 10 pages of comments on this draft. I don't want to do it this way. I, I don't want to sit in front of the board and speak directly to Gail or directly to the county manager about the issues. I think we were elected as a governing body to talk about these things. My mind often changes when I get input from other people. I, I mean, isn't this a decision-making body? Isn't this a body where things don't, aren't supposed to happen alone with a staff person in their office? Our decisions should be public. If we are not supportive of climate change, then we need to sit here and say that. And perhaps we need to talk about some of those differences so that our constituents know who we are and what we stand for. Because as I say, my opinions about verbiage and things, they often get changed. But, but they don't get changed just talking to a staff person and telling them how I feel. They get changed by talking to my fellow commissioners and by hearing their perspectives on things. I, this process could take us 15 years if we, if we do the whole complian this way. And because I believe that probably every commissioner could produce a list of things. And I don't think that's good government.
So, thank you. Thank you for that comment. So what we'll look to do is to improve our process so that it is all of the things that we described that we want for our public input process, that we have discussions that move us forward and really further our relationship, our constructive, positive relationships with each other and with the place. And on that happy note, I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.